Are you want me to do that?
Good morning. Being 9:00 AM, I'll call to order the McHenry County Board Committee of the Hall meeting of August 15, 2024, and Ms. Van Hoff will lead us in the pledge today.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for our all.
Kathy, can you call the roll, please?
Pam Althoff. Carolyn Campbell. Joseph Gotamaller. Terry Greeno. Eric Hendricks. Carl Kaminski. James Kearns. Matthew Kunkel. Teresa Mashes. Lou Ness. John Reinert. Brian Sager. Michael Shorten. Michael Scala. Larry Smith. Gloria Van Hoff. Tracy Von Bergen. Kelly Wagner. Chairman Bueller.
Having a quorum, we'll proceed. Good morning again. I have several items I'd like to share with you before we review the agenda for next Tuesday's voting meeting. A week ago, County Administrator Pete Austin and I once again had the honor of congratulating the 103 high school interns who just completed the third round of the Manufacturing Pathways Consortium's rotational summer internship program. At the event at McHenry County College, Pete and I got to interview a panel of these hard workers as they told their family and friends about their experiences working for local manufacturers. I've said this before, and I'll say it again, the $717,300 that the county board allocated three years ago to get this program started is one of the wisest investments we've made through the Advanced McHenry County Program. Thank you to the students, MCC, and to the area manufacturers who took on these paid interns to give them a taste of pursuing manufacturing careers. And I'm happy to reiterate, the program will continue next year courtesy of a workforce development grant awarded by the Illinois Community College Board. On Tuesday, August 6, Treasurer Donna Kurtz and County Clerk and Recorder Joe Tyrrio teamed up with the Heartland Realtor Organization to hold a property tax workshop to educate the public about tax breaks and the many protections available to them. The event held at the Realtor Organization's Crystal Lake office was well attended, both in person and virtually, and Donna and Joe did an outstanding job of breaking things down, especially with regard to the new property tax bills and the VIP taxpayer program. I'd like to thank both of them for taking the initiative to reach out to the public and to the Heartland Realtor Organization for providing the venue. Thank you as well to County Member, County Board Member Mike Shorten for attending. Yesterday, the Metro Board of Directors held its monthly meeting right down the road at Woodstock City Hall. The city and Mayor Mike Turner were very gracious hosts, and I had the pleasure of welcoming the directors on behalf of the county. Our Metro colleagues enjoyed seeing the square and downtown Woodstock, and it's always nice when the agencies we work with on a regular basis, be it Metro, CMAP, or any other, make the effort to come out here to help forge and maintain close ties. Starting this month, the Mental Health Board is providing quarterly reports to the county board in an effort to enhance transparency. You can find it in the Reports section of next Tuesday's agenda. This quarterly report comes in addition to the annual report that the Mental Health Board presents to us. And speaking of transparency, I'm pleased to report that starting in September, the Mental Health Board meetings will be streamed live and will be available on the McHenry County Meeting Portal. It's my pleasure to announce that Community Development Administrator Hans Mach has been named to the Board of Directors of the National Community Development Association. The NCDAs is a nonpartisan, nonprofit association of more than 500 local governments that administer federal community development, affordable housing, and economic development programs through the Department of Housing and Urban Development. You'd be very hard-pressed to find a more knowledgeable and dedicated community development professional than Hans. His appointment is well-deserved, and it brings great honor to himself, the Community Development Department, and McHenry County. And as a reminder, you should all have received the email from Joe Tyrrio inviting us immediately after the Committee of the Hall this morning to visit the new McHenry County Election Center. The doors will be open from the end of our meeting until 2:00 PM. If you can't make it, please let Joe know so he can find another time for you. And finally, I'm extending an invitation to anyone who wants to join me for my next McHenry County Conservation District hike with Mike. We'll be walking the trails of Elizabeth Lake Nature Preserve in Richmond from 10:00 to 11:30 AM this Saturday. It's great exercise, and it's free. There are a few slots left, and you can register through the Conservation District's online calendar at mccdistrict.org. And that concludes my remarks for this morning. After members' comments and public comments, I'll be introducing McHenry County Economic Development Corporation's Executive Director Mark Picos to provide the board with an update on MCEDC's activities. This is Mark's first meeting with us since he took the reins, and he's really hit the ground running, and I'm excited to hear what he has to say. And just a quick note to let you know, there will be an item added under New and Unfinished Business when we repost the agenda tomorrow. It's related to the Clerk's Office and printing ballots, and time is of the essence, so we need to get this approved this month. That being said, are there any member comments today? Ms. Ness.
Tuesday, I was in Oswego for the Mayor's Caucus, Mayor's Regional Roundtable, and again, it was very informative. However, it turns out that McHenry County is the only county that has put together the Workforce Housing Partnership. There's no other county in the state of Illinois that has put together a process like we did. So we were the first and the only. Thank you.
Great. Leading the way. Ms. Greeno.
Yes, I just wanted to mention that this Saturday, I had the privilege to participate and get wet with a vet, and this was where boaters would volunteer to give veterans rides around the chain of lakes and then go to lunch and meet people, for example, like Ray Martin, who is 76 years old, has been married 56 years to his high school, sweetheart, enlisted to go serve in Vietnam, has three kids, and was leaving the event to go to his granddaughter's graduation party. And it was just moving. Some of the gentlemen were, I mean, they were deeply moved at having the opportunity to just go out and have fun. Okay, got a little rough with the water gun fights, but, you know, what can I say? They're trained veterans. So I just am so glad for this opportunity. I hope that people will join in next year for the fun.
Thank you. Seeing no further member comments, move on to public comments. Kyle Lindley.
Good morning. I'm Kyle Lindley with Prairie Enterprises. Just wanted to give you an update on our plans for the, we have asked the board here for an extension on our proposal for the zoning to be changed over by Flowerwood on the corner of 176 and 14. I'm here mainly to answer if there's any questions, to give you, just if there are any questions regarding the extension, and then also to give you an update that we are meeting with the Planning and Zoning Committee with Crystal Lake to see what exactly they want, and have given them a full proposal, and that will be next week. And so I just wanted to give you guys an update on what was transpiring through that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we'll move on to reports and presentations. As I mentioned, we have Mark Picos from the McHenry County Economic Development Corporation. Welcome, Mark.
Good morning, and thank you, Chairman Bueller. This indeed is my first time presenting to the McHenry County Board. Not my first time in the room, though. Annually, for the last seven years, we end our Leadership Greater McHenry County Youth Program Day here, where they start the day at the Sheriff's Department, and then they end here to learn about how the county government operates. And I must say, I do have some nerves, as it is my first time here presenting to you, but with a panel of 16 high school students, sophomores, and juniors, significantly more nerves. They are a tough crowd, so I'm feeling pretty comfortable. I want to thank you for the opportunity to discuss the McHenry County Economic Development Corporation, as well as introduce myself, since I'm a bit of a new face around here in this role. I've been the Executive Director of the MCEDC since June of this year. June 1 is when I started, but I'm not a terrifically new face around McHenry County. My father's father moved here in 1952. He built a home for five kids out of a military Quonset hut on a plot of land that he bought from his brother in Woodstock. His brother lived next door to that plot of land, and now my wife and I live in that house. My mom still lives in the Quonset hut, but we've done some additions because it was getting a bit cramped, right? It did certainly give my father the ability to say, well, when I was a kid, we were five kids in one little bedroom. My dad stuck around McHenry County and decided to make a business out of his passion for motorcycles. He did that for close to 50 years, also in Woodstock, right on 47. When he passed away, my mom and I, we took the helm. We did our best to run that business and continue the legacy that it established in McHenry County, but truly, it was my father's passion, and it wasn't ours, right? I found myself after that in a couple of different, unique positions at the Illinois Small Business Development Center at McHenry County College. This is a cooperatively grant-funded program that provides no-cost confidential advising to small businesses. This role fed my passion for entrepreneurship and met my need to share my experiences, give some best practices, and maybe some don't-do-that practices to business owners. In addition to that, it was really a catalyst for me diving into economic development with both feet. It was an unexpected catalyst, but a catalyst nonetheless. I quickly learned about the infrastructure in our community that supported businesses from startup to maturity. And what I learned is that economic development, by definition, is creating conditions for economic growth and improved quality of life. This is done by expanding the capacity of individuals, businesses, and communities itself. When we collaborate on economic development, we maximize the youth of talent and skill to support innovation, job creation, and investment in our region and county. An incredible example of that, to your point, Chairman, is the Manufacturing Pathways, something that the McHenry County Economic Development Corporation has worked on since its inception and continues to work on today. It was immensely heartening to see the responses from the students who are graduating from the program and talk about their future and how it was shifted by the program. So the MCEDC approaches economic development as a private-public partnership, excuse me, a public-private partnership, and that's a badge that we wear proudly. It means that we serve stakeholders in both our local government and private industry simultaneously. It means that we're responsible for conscientiously engaging with our legislative partners, government administration, and of course, the private sector. It means that we share the county's commitment to encourage smart, sustainable development that expands McHenry County's tax base. The MCEDC is the organization that brings voices from both sectors, all of the industries, all of the government, to the table to ensure that decisions are made to enhance. The public-private partnership is the foundation of our budget as well. The county board makes an annual contribution to the MCEDC, and we develop additional funding from private sector investments as well as our programming. I want to take a moment today to share my gratitude to the county board for your continued support and investment in the MCEDC and economic development. Your contribution allows us to continue our mission to attract, expand, and retain businesses in McHenry County. We don't take lightly the commitment that the county board has made over the years, and I also want to appreciate your consideration for the recent salary agreement arranged to the county board. Access to the county benefits has made the MCEDC more competitive in attracting future talent and given our current staff an increased sense of security. So I appreciate the hard work that you've done to make that happen. The public-private partnership is not an uncommon foundation for economic development organizations. Lake, Kendall, Will, DuPage, Cook, and recently Kane County all share the same approach. These are also the same counties, which, including McHenry, makes seven, that participate in the Greater Chicagoland Economic Partnership. This is a regional economic collaboration that was started in 2023 by World Business Chicago and the mentioned partners. GSEP has been a valuable tool in my early days within this organization. I've had numerous opportunities to connect with experienced economic development professionals, discuss important topics, and strategize on how to promote Chicagoland as a region. The common phrase that's tossed around in GSEP is that, when we all do better, we all do better. Recently, GSEP facilitated a visit to McHenry County by a delegation of Brazilian business owners, researchers, and government representatives. Their goal was to learn more about how McHenry County approaches our innovative agriculture ecosystem and explore opportunities for partnership investment. This was incredibly rewarding for me to be involved in, and a little bit intimidating considering it happened within the first month that I was in the organization. However, everyone involved, specifically our county board members and our education partners, made me and the Brazilian delegation feel incredibly comfortable. Next week, we will host our GSEP partners, including all the regional partners at McHenry County College to discuss some of McHenry County's assets and kick off a regional global marketing profile that is going to, that is designed to attract foreign direct investment to the region, right, as a, the region as a whole. This is just a preview into some of the benefits that we receive from the GSEP partnership. At next month's September 12 county board meeting, Kyle Schultz, the Chief Growth Officer of World Business Chicago and our GSEP liaison, will be at the meeting, this meeting, to talk about the other focus areas, including the research tools that are offered and some of the initiatives that we're going to embark on as we continue our partnership. Another important regional collaboration that the MCEDC participates in is the Region One Planning Council. Region R1 focuses on Winnebago, Boone, and McHenry Counties. To date, MCEDC has played a key role in providing feedback to the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy, or SEDs, developed by R1. By bringing information from McHenry County's 2050 Comprehensive Plan, we've been able to collaborate on impactful grant programs that will spread growth, talent, and prosperity throughout the region. Locally, we've engaged in several key initiatives, collaborating with partners in McHenry County's municipalities, their governments, education, and special agencies. One such initiative that's a recent addition to the MCEDC is the administration of the McHenry County Enterprise Zone. This is a benefit that provides commercial property owners who choose to expand or build within key areas of McHenry County with economic incentives such as real estate tax abatement, sales tax reduction on construction materials, and capital, and long-term, short-term capital gain offsets. Sorry, I'm not an accountant. Currently, the zone incorporates Harvard, Woodstock, and Marengo. It's an incredible asset to have in our toolbox, and it's an opportunity for those municipalities to bring a county voice to the table when development is undergoing. In that same vein, I'm excited to announce that we're reconvening the Edge Group, or Economic Development Growth Experts, in October. This is a collaborative effort between the McHenry County Council of Governments and the McHenry County EDC that's going to bring together municipal economic development professionals, chambers of commerce, and partners from MCC, the SBDC, and McHenry County Workforce Network. Shared resources and long-term stewardship are the goals of the group. We want to provide an environment to those who excel, we want to provide an environment where those who excel in one specific area can share strategies with those who are seeking to build. We want to encourage communities to grow autonomously but maintain a regional vision for McHenry County, and the Edge Group is a great way to do that with specific learning activities and conversations. I'd be remiss not to share and express my gratitude for the county's support in our recent realignment of our application to the Advanced McHenry County Program. With McHenry County College as a partner, the SBDC specifically, we will deliver, through the Advanced McHenry County Program, we intend to deliver a two-pronged strategy that aims to aid business owners in exit and succession planning, as well as inspire up-and-coming entrepreneurs to potentially purchase those businesses that may be coming up for sale. The intent of this is a hedge against the attrition of the foundational businesses in our community. If we can provide a roadmap for those businesses to navigate a transition, we will reduce the risk of those businesses and moreover, the employees who work at them, leaving McHenry County permanently. The goal is to keep what gets made here, made here. And once again, I do want to thank you for your support. We wouldn't be able to achieve what we intend to do without the support of the ARPA Advanced McHenry County Program. These are our key areas of focus for the next quarter. The next six months beyond that, we plan to further engage with the business community to determine the highest needs and gain quantitative data that helps our strategic decision-making. Of course, we'll continue to build on the practice of enthusiastically responding to well-suited requests for information that are sent from our strategic partners at the State of Illinois. McHenry County Economic Development Corporation acts as an intermediary between the specific municipalities when the State of Illinois, or Intersect Illinois is the organization name, says, hey, we have a X company looking to acquire X amount of property. What do you have in terms of available greenfield, brownfield, available existing construction? So it's our role to bring that information to the municipalities and say, hey, you've got a perfect property for this. How can we collaborate and how can we assist? Simultaneously, we seek to strengthen the foundation of our own organization by continuing to seek diverse private sector investment. It's our goal to enhance the quality of living for McHenry County residents by bolstering our economic health and outlook. I'm excited to return to this meeting in a year and share the success stories of the businesses that have benefited from a relationship with the MCEDC and our partners. After all, a rising tide lifts all boats. I'm sure there are plenty of other things on the agenda, and as you can tell, I could talk about economic development all day. It excites me. I've gone through three notebooks that I keep by the side of my bed for those middle-of-the-night revelations, new ideas that come to me. My wife absolutely hates it and is always like, turn off the light, it's 3:00 AM. You know, in my, all my vast experience in this role, I've learned a key lesson in patience. The work that we do isn't about quick and direct results. It's not about short interactions that lead to an immediate outcome. It's about building and sustaining relationships that grow and bear fruit over time. So here we are at the start of one such relationship, and I look forward to working and collaborating with each one of you. I'd like to meet with you all individually and discuss your visions for the county. After all, we are in similar lines of work, and it's the kind of work where we plant the seeds of trees, knowing that our children's children will be the ones who enjoy the shade. So I want to thank you again for having me this morning, and I want to convey my excitement and gratitude to the county board and the MCEDC's board for giving me this role and this position. I think we'll do great things together. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have. I have some business cards here if you want to contact me, but I look forward to working together.
Thank you, Mark, and welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Any questions for Mark? Going once? Going twice? No questions. I have one question.
Yeah.
I mean, could you explain to us a little bit, I mean, some of the successes of GSEP? I mean, locally, I mean, I don't, are you up to speed on that?
So there's been a number of, there's been a number of interactions with GSEP at specific businesses. One particular one is the expansion of FlowCon with Steve Ballow, who is on our board. They were able to expand upon his existing outlet of the business. Additionally, I know that we submitted an expansion at General Kinematics as one of our, as the kind of most significant expansion that was included in GSEP's annual circulation that they send for what we've done this year.
Okay. And if I remember right, there was about 15 jobs at General Kinematics, which is...
That sounds right.
Not a huge number, but...
Every one, every job counts.
Considering we only contribute $30,000 to GSEP.
Yeah, it's a significant benefit, and I look forward to having Kyle out here next month, and he can go even further in depth.
Great. Thanks for coming.
Yeah, you bet. Thank you for having me.
I move on to new business. Do any board members have items they'd like removed from next Tuesday's agenda? Ms. Mashes?
Thank you. I would like 10C1, and also, can we discuss the new and unfinished business topic that you had talked about regarding the election? Thank you.
Anyone else? Joe, why don't you come on up and get that one first? Terry?
I don't know if this is appropriate, but I did have a question about wanting to get more information on the Mental Health Board budget, and so I don't know if that's something that I address now or later. Probably later.
I don't see anybody from Mental Health Board here. You might want to reach out to them offline. Where's Joe sitting? Oh, you're in Pete's spot. Okay, Ms. Mashes?
So what is it? I was looking like an email to see, or sometimes we have a sheet that has a resolution that's going to come up. What are we, what is the topic going to be that we're voting on?
It's simply printing and mailing for the ballots. That's all. Not very sexy, but the timing was such, we maybe could have waited till the next meeting, but would certainly rather have it done this meeting.
Do we have a number?
$115,650, and that's the vote by mail, print, fold, insert, mail, as well as the ballots that we use in the polling places.
So did like the cost go up, or what led to the increase that we're going, that you're going to need for the budget?
I don't need an increase in the budget. I just need approval for it.
Oh, okay. All right. Thank you.
Sure.
All right. Thanks, Jill.
Sure.
And Teresa, 10C1?
So I, oh, yeah. So I saw in our packet that there was an email from the lawyer for Prairie Enterprises. How is, I guess, I'm wondering, would we just approve another extension to the thing, or what is the legal ramifications of, what's going, what's, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, so the UDO does allow for an extension. So where we've been with the application that has come forward to the county board, they have been able to pull that and have basically withdrawn that petition from each county board meeting coming up to this point. But this is the 180-day marker, which means the county board would need to either... the county board would need to either act on it or approve an extension. And so that, or authorize is the word that it says. So what they have been requesting now, or what they've requested at this point, is that the county board does consider and approve and authorize that 180-day extension, which would get them to February for the actual voting meeting. So that's, that, it's kind of a standard procedure, but a little atypical in terms of, we don't see it too often here.
So will one of us... Will one of us have to make a motion for that on Tuesday?
Yes, yes. So that's, at least that's what we've been talking about, is that it would be a motion made, and then that would be voted upon to authorize that extension for this, for this application.
Okay, and would they be looking for us to make the extension to set it for the February meeting, or just to give the extension and they'll, and be contacted with your department to tell us when they want to come here again?
The extension was for 180 days, which we would translate that to the, to a date certain, which would be the February meeting.
Okay.
I don't, I don't have that date.
Right, well, we can look it up.
Yeah.
I'll look it up. I'll look it up. Okay. All right, that's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Smith?
Yeah, on the same subject, and thank you, Adam, for explaining that. As you all heard, Mr. Lindley's in favor of having the request. We have a formal letter from his attorney requesting that extension, so I anticipate that on Tuesday night, I'll pull this and make a motion to approve that extension. So should not be an issue at all.
Ms. Altough?
Also, on the same issue, I'm just going to remind everybody, and for the record, that the extension is needed because we specifically requested that the petitioner work with the city of Crystal Lake, and that's exactly what he's doing. So, thank you.
Ms. Ness?
And Crystal Lake supports the extension? Also, I mean...
We haven't heard from them. They're not a party to that.
Okay.
Mr. Reiner?
I spoke with Katie Cowan from the Economic Department of Crystal Lake, and they are most anxious to work with them on some conceptual drawings, so.
Okay, so no further comment? Scott, you got a report for us, or Pete, are you going to provide a report for us today? You look very relaxed, Pete.
Let's go do it.
All right, Scott.
All right. Thank you. I'm sorry, Pete, are you going to say anything, or do you just want me to carry it?
You take it away.
I'll take it away. So we have just a couple of items. First off, just a reminder, as the chairman mentioned, after this meeting, our county clerk will give you a wonderful tour of our new election center. I think you're going to be thoroughly impressed with what went into it, and from what I'm understanding, it's very well-received by those going through it, receiving training, as well as the city clerks that you provided training to. So I'm very impressed with that facility. So a couple of items, just to let you know, and this is a topic of discussion that have been held. One is the space analysis that we talked about, Administrative Services, a few months back, had a presentation on our space issues, space being our facilities, and our county staff is going to be meeting with Kluber, which is the architect that did the previous space analysis, just to kind of get the ball rolling on what that next one would look like. You know, we want to get moving on that. These needs are arising from various departments, and it's important that sooner than later we start to work on this. So I want you to know that that's happening. Secondly, this is very exciting for, I know Alicia and I in particular, but the strategic plan is coming very quickly. We anticipate in early 2025, the county board will work on your next strategic plan, and to get that ball rolling, we're going to meet internally, we, the county administrator, myself, and Alicia, to discuss what that approach will look like, how we want to kind of frame it, and then we intend to bring in the NIU Center for Governmental Studies team, which was the facilitator for the last two plans, to discuss that with them, and then they can develop a scope of services. We'll get an idea for the cost, and that's something we can incorporate into the upcoming budget, and so that should be happening next week. Another member of that meeting that's going to be internal is going to be our new NIU intern. If you recall, we are going to bring on an NIU MPA graduate student to help the county with various efforts, one of which will be the strategic plan. This individual's name is Alex Wall, and we're excited, a young, bright gentleman, and I'll look forward to you meeting him in the next couple of weeks, but he's going to have a key role in strategic planning, and excited to have him as part of the team. And the final thing I have, and then Pete, of course, if I miss anything, please feel free to jump in. I want to thank all of our citizen scientists for your work with spongy moth trapping. It was, you know, we actually had a really good reception from the community. Many of our citizen scientists, of course, are sitting before me here on the county board, so thank you for that. We had 65 traps deployed. We're getting the numbers in. I'll tell you, I don't want to, you know, share too much, but the numbers are much higher than I expected, but with that, we're compiling the data, and a lot of people have taken the time to go through the traps and do the counting for me, and that's greatly appreciated. If you or a citizen scientist in the public would rather not do the counting, I'll be happy to do so, under other duties as assigned in my job description, so.
Ms. Altough?
Just going back to the strategic plan, and I appreciate Alicia has kept us up to date on kind of a report card. That, too, will be part of the beginning of our strategic plan, I would assume, is that to evaluate where we were and how we've come and kind of where those projects sit today, right?
Yeah, certainly, as part of any strategic planning process, you want to look at what you've done, what were those key strategic objectives, what advancement have you made on those, and, you know, one of the questions you're going to ask, did we achieve that? Did we accomplish a goal? And in 2025, with whomever sitting on the county board, you're going to ask the question, is that still a key strategic goal? There may be others that rise as a higher priority, and some may fall off, but that's part of your evaluation. You are going to set those key strategic objectives, and part of it's looking at, what have we done? How far have we gone? What more do we need to do? And then we can build off of that last plan.
Ms. Van Hoff?
Yes, I just have two softball questions. Is the NIU internship a paid one?
It is paid. It's actually a contractual relationship through NIU, so we're, as a county, not going to pay this individual directly. We're actually going to pay NIU, the NIU Master of Public Administration Program, on a contractual relationship. So in essence, it'll be a contractual employee assigned to here.
Okay, and then the other one. I did not collect my spongy moth trap, but it's out there, so can I still bring that to you?
Of course.
Okay, cool.
Mr. Smith?
Okay, same as Gloria, I'm one of your citizen scientists, and I missed the memo about we were supposed to be counting them and bringing them in, but now's the time, huh?
Yeah, so now's the time, in fact, this week, next week, so it's, you know, this is the window. We're still well within the window.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Gottermiller makes the motion. Mr. Kaminsky...